Call meeting order, please stand to salute our flag. If you would remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Chairman Quackenbush.
Present.
Legislator Diamond. Legislator White.
Present.
Legislator Beniat.
Present.
Legislator DeChesney.
Here.
Legislator Wheeler. Legislator Isabelle.
Here.
Legislator Kuchus.
Here.
Legislator Kelly.
Privilege of the floor, at this time is time for public comment. This is the chance for anyone from the public who wishes to address the legislature to do so, not really a question and answer time, it's just, it's all, the floor will be yours. I just ask that when you rise, you state your name, let us know who you are, where you live, and then you can speak freely. Before we do that, County Executive Matt Ossenford has an announcement or two that he would like to share.
Oh, sure. Just wanted to make everyone aware here and through the media, we've been working very hard the last couple of months on the county's first executive budget. We will be presenting that on Wednesday at the Old Courthouse at 6:00 PM. So that will be the starting point, major starting point of our budget negotiations over the next couple of months. The public is invited and encouraged to attend, along with our department heads, employees, obviously legislators, I'm really looking forward to it. We've been working pretty well as a team in this process, and I'm just looking forward to showing the public, you know, everything we've been working on and trying to provide some solutions to some of the challenges that we face. So, again, it's Wednesday, September 3rd, I believe, at the Old Courthouse, 6:00 PM, the executive budget presentation.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak, please stand now. Name, please?
I'm Steve Quackenbush, I live in Alliston. I'm an attorney general at St. Mary's Hospital for 10 years, and on behalf of our nurses, we'd like to thank you for the letter of recent support. It means so much to us, that our elected official support is in our right to organize. We're expecting our union date by the end of this month, so the support is welcomed and greatly appreciated. Majority of nurses at St. Mary's have come together to join the New York State Nurses Association, because we want to have a say in how we're treated and how we care for the residents of Montgomery County. After our election, we'd like to move quickly to reach a fair agreement, so that every bedside nurse at the hospital can look forward to building a long-term career in our community with a real voice at work. We're confident that we can build a positive and productive relationship with St. Mary's and that, and again, thank you for your support, it was so appreciated, you know, it's a great thing to have our community support us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to address the legislature? Hearing none, we'll close public comment, we'll move into our proclamations. I would ask County Executive Ossenford to join me. We have three longtime employees with us tonight, Kathy Snyder, Jesse Bartosik, and Fay Kling, who I think if my math is right, have 30, 30, and 41, 101 years of experience. That is a lot of time to be with us. So, what I've asked County Executive and I have made mutual proclamations, so we're gonna, first, we're gonna do Kathy, if Kathy would come forward, actually, we can come right out in the front. And then I'll do the second one.
Now Kathy works in the Annex Building. And has, I've gotten the privilege to know her over the past seven months or so, and it's been an interesting experience, I think sometimes when I come in and I'm all excited or agitated about something, she looks at me and says, "Oh geez, what's this guy come to?" But we've really developed a good relationship, and I'm very, one thing that I've really loved about having this job is the people that work for us and building those relationships, and Kathy is certainly no exception. So, I'm gonna read this proclamation for you. It says, "Whereas Kathy Snyder has provided three decades of meticulous service to Montgomery County, always fulfilling her duties in an efficient and organized manner; and whereas Mrs. Snyder dedicated herself to the county's data processing department, being incredibly detail-oriented, cataloging office events, something she also enjoyed doing outside of the office, and being amazing when it comes to organization; and whereas Mrs. Snyder truly loved her job and coming to work each and every day for Montgomery County, always providing friendly customer service along the way. Before finishing her career in this past August 2014 as a principal account clerk typist, data entry machine operator, now therefore be resolved that County Executive Matthew Ossenford and Legislative Chairman Tom Quackenbush hereby proclaim August 22nd, 2014 as an official date in Montgomery County to most express appreciation and sincerely thank Kathy Snyder for her 30 years of loyal and dedicated service to the county." So, here you go. And I will say, I think you can judge how well an employee is appreciated and liked by the going away party, and I gotta say, I haven't seen a spread like that since I've been here, and I haven't seen that many people in one room since I've been here, so I know you're truly gonna be best. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You want to say anything, or the floor is yours?
Well, I carry many happy memories of the county, and this just adds to it. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Well, thanks again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next?
Next up, Jesse, come on up. Jesse has been a longtime employee, and has worked in our personnel office forever and a day. But, you know, personnel is really where you're gonna touch every single employee at some point or another, and Jesse has done that, so, and she's done a great job at it. So, we appreciate, we appreciate everything that you've done for us over the years.
Thank you.
You know, as I said, personnel is where the continuity comes together, and you're a big reason why we're successful, so.
Appreciate it.
Montgomery County Executive Proclamation. Oh, by the way, I was just standing here, was it last, how many, when, Nick?
April.
April? I don't know, the month ago, but, you know, so actually, how many years is that combined?
A lot.
Not just married, but working for the county. Okay, Jesse. Whereas Jesse Bartosik has offered three decades of successful service to Montgomery County, using her creativity and imagination to see the job through, always with a kind-hearted touch; and whereas Mrs. Bartosik began working for Montgomery County in 1984, and three years later joined the personnel office, where she retired from the position of Personnel Associate in July 2014; and whereas Mrs. Bartosik has also given back to the community in various ways, including serving on the Supervisory Board at MCT Federal Credit Union, working with Hagman Volunteer Fire Department as President of the Ladies Auxiliary, now therefore resolved, be it resolved, County Executive Matthew L. Ossenford, Legislative Chairman Thomas L. Quackenbush hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 26th, 2014 as an official date in Montgomery County to most gratefully thank Jesse Bartosik for her outstanding dedication and commitment, and recognizes her for her 30 years of service to this county. Congratulations.
I'd like to say the same thing, basically, it was really a pleasure working here. I met a lot of fantastic people. And Montgomery County has a lot of really good employees, and I thank everyone for the recognition. You guys are great.
Congrats.
Thanks.
Fay? Yep, and we have Fay next. And before we get into Fay, I just want to say that when I first started, and I was the new guy, Nick and Jesse were, went out of their way to be helpful to me, and in writing their proclamations, it was as impressive as what they do in work as what they do out of work. And, you know, you see a lot of people in this county that work hard every day, but then in their spare time are at the fire department, or ladies auxiliary, or whatever it may be, and these are the type of people that make it amazing to live around here. And these are the things that the small-town type community and those bonds between people that may separate in Montgomery County from some of these larger areas where people don't even know their neighbors, and, you know, I just think that's what really makes this place so great. So, I just wanted to throw that in there. But if we could have Fay come up, we will take it from there.
One here.
Yeah. This is impressive.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, whereas Fay Kling has spent more than four decades committed to the Montgomery County Department of Social Services, which is no easy job; whereas Mrs. Kling has been dedicated and thorough in her work throughout her entire career, working with the Medicaid Department in accordance with the mission of the Department of Social Services, has helped to promote the well-being of county citizens through the supportive social services to strengthen and enhance quality of life; and whereas Ms. Kling has been wholeheartedly devoted to the elderly population in Montgomery County, and has been an invaluable resource that will truly be missed by her coworkers, and the agency, and the county executive. Now therefore be resolved that County Executive Matthew Ossenford and Legislative Chairman Tom Quackenbush hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 26th, 2014 as an official date in Montgomery County to honor, sincerely appreciate, and thank Fay Kling for 41 years of faithful service to the county. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And as Tom said, whether you're in personnel, or any of our departments, the social services oftentimes can get, not the reputation that I would like, but a lot of times people don't realize that the folks in social services are the ones on the front lines answering the phones for folks that don't have anyone else in their lives, or people that are really in need of help and don't have anywhere else to turn, and they are really the unsung heroes of the county. So, 41 years of that work, God bless you, and thank you so much, so.
You're welcome. And I just want to say that I've met so many people in Montgomery County, working with them, you know, the coworkers, and I, and there's so many that I, I can't imagine ever forgetting. But also the people that I've dealt with in Montgomery County who come in to seek, you know, some advice or information, they have been very kind people, and they, they're just here to ask for a little help when they need it. And I want to thank everybody for the recognition, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You know, these jobs of ours, they sometimes, a lot of strange things happen to us, and it's not often that we get to, only on occasion, really celebrate some things like these, so we enjoy that part of it.
Greatly.
All right, I don't think we have any other proclamations. We have a presentation from Capital District OTB. We are ready for you, if you would like, you could do it right from there, you can come forward, whatever you're comfortable with.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Do you need the podium?
No, no, I'm fine.
Okay.
So, I appreciate the invitation, I see one of my, Nick Kling used to work for Capital District. I want to thank the County Executive, and the Board, and Chairman for allowing me to come and speak. One of the things that we, at Capital OTB, over the years have seen in horse racing is our business decline, and it's happened a lot because of the competition. Probably 10 years ago, we were the only game in town, the tracks and the OTBs. Subsequently, the tracks were able to get BLTs, or Video Lottery Terminals, Saratoga has them, and all the tracks in the state. And out-of-state internet wagering sites would come in, and probably in the last five years, they were always, they were not allowed to come in, and then five years ago they were. And what's happened is probably between $250 and $500 million in business has been lost from the OTBs and the tracks to these out-of-state sites. So, basically, these sites are taking the money out of state, and that's why you've seen your revenues here decline because of that. What we've done in response to that is we've tried, we've cut our workforce, we were at, probably eight years ago, nine years ago, we're at 415 employees, we're down to 225. We've cut spending eight of the last nine years. And actually, I want to recognize Peter Bellina, who's been terrific, terrific board member, a great advocate for Montgomery County, and a great advocate for the taxpayers of Montgomery County. So, I just want to make sure the Board knew that. So, Capital OTB decided probably our Board and management to try to partner, become part of the casino situation in the Capital Region. And we ended up, first we started in Albany, and now we're in Rensselaer County, we're in the city of Rensselaer. We partnered with, the team we have is Hard Rock International, OXIF, which is a private equity fund from New York City, and Global Gaming, which is a casino gaming company out of Oklahoma. And if you look at, obviously, if you look at Hard Rock, they're, you know, they're in 58 countries, 150, 180 locations in 58 countries. The financing from OXIF, their private hedge fund in New York City, they are the fourth largest hedge fund in the world, so they're gonna fund it, there's no third-party monies that are coming in, they're gonna fund it themselves, no mortgages, no banks. And so, we feel fortunate that we're able to partner with them. And what we've been able to do is by partnering with them, we believe we're gonna generate, we're gonna be able to generate additional revenues for the counties we represent. Just a little background, we have 16, Capital OTB represents 16 counties in upstate New York, including Montgomery and Fulton, and we go all the way up to Clinton County, up near the Canadian border, out to Oneida in Madison County, and down to Columbia and Green County. So, we have that 16-county region in the city of Sycamore today. So, our relationship with the, with the casino operator is that we are gonna have, so we are concerned that if we didn't get involved in the casino action, if you will, our business would decline even further. I think if you look at the controllers, Controller, the state controller put out a report, I think on May 30th, that talked about all the entities that were gonna be impacted by casinos, and negatively impacted, and one was obviously OTB. So, with that in mind, we would rather try to increase our business and find additional revenue sources than kind of sit back and hope nothing bad happens to us. The other thing that's happened in the meantime is the tracks have all got BLTs, Video Lottery Terminals, basically slots, and they've been making money hand over fist, and we believed that when they got the BLTs and they were established, and were making a lot, you know, millions of dollars, that we'd be able to go back to the legislature and get changes that would allow us to keep some of the money that we pay the tracks. You know, for instance, we pay Saratoga Harness, just one example, we pay Saratoga Harness about $3 million a year, and we make $300,000 on the races. So, we lose, I take that track, we lose $2.7 million, and they are making tens of millions of dollars a year on BLTs. The problem is, is the tracks have so much power now, that they can kill any legislation that helps OTBs and helps the counties we represent, Montgomery included. So, we decided not to sit, you know, and spend that way for the last, you know, seven years, we've been going to the legislature, everybody agrees with our arguments, and then nothing happens. So, we decided to partner with a casino operator, we believe that we, you know, we believe we have the best operator, Hard Rock, it has the best brand name, it generates, if you look at the revenue projections, I think it's $40 million, $40 million more than any other casino proposal. I think the next closest is, it's, they do about $220 million, we estimate about $260 million. So, that alone would result in Montgomery County getting more money, just because the gross revenues are high. Then you add in Capital OTB, our relationship is that we're gonna have an OTB outlet in the casino. We've negotiated to have a 2,000-square-foot race book in the casino. That'll do several things, that will protect our market to make sure that, you know, we don't, we don't get damaged too much. And I think you'll have a lot of out-of-state people coming to the casino, out-of-town people who otherwise wouldn't wager with OTB, who are now gonna wager in the casino and wager with us. So, that's one revenue stream, I think we're gonna see revenues increase and business increase. The other is, we've partnered with a developer from Rochester, and we're gonna own the land that the casino's on. So, we're gonna do, we're gonna have a ground lease with the casino operator, and they're gonna pay us between $1 to $2 million a year for the ground lease, based on the revenues that come in. So, there's, you know, there's, in my view, probably between $1.5 and $2 million in additional revenue every year. And so, when I come here to Montgomery County, I say, all right, last year, I think, we, the county got about $51,000 from OTB, we're estimating that that number would double from Capital OTB when this operation, when Hard Rock is operational. So, you're gonna get additional revenues from Hard Rock, because they're gonna do $40 million estimated more than any other casino, and from OTBs' relationship, our revenues are gonna go from $50,000 up to $100,000. And you'll, you know, I appreciate the County Executive talking about budgets, I'm sure every dollar counts, every time I talk to the, you know, the counties in this presentation, you know, it's every dollar they can get, you know, is beneficial. Obviously, we view Montgomery County as very important, as you guys are in the casino region. I know you were part of the, you know, going for a casino, and I can appreciate that, and I can appreciate how difficult that was, County Executive and Board, it's very difficult. And I know you had, you know, unfortunately, it didn't happen, but notwithstanding that, we think that because of your relationship with Capital OTB, and because you participate with Capital OTB, that we can get you more revenue than any other proposal, any other casino out there. So, what we're asking is that you would, you know, pass a resolution in support of the Hard Rock Casino. We have 10 counties that have done so so far, 10 counties have participated in Capital OTB. One is Washington County, Washington's in the eight-county region. So, we, you know, we are asking, we're also gonna make the same pitch to Fulton County as well, since we have, in our relationship with the county, if someone goes, no, we go back to 1975, the county joined Capital OTB in 1975, I think since that time, we provided the county with like $6 million of revenues. And it has gone down in recent years, but we're doing everything we can with Peter's help and the Board's help, to try to increase those revenues. And I think our relationship with the, with the Hard Rock Casino will do that, and will bring additional revenues to the counties, help the taxpayers in this county, and help the Board with some of their budget issues, hopefully. So, that's kind of what I got to say, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I don't know if it's a question, or, maybe it is. You just told us that there's a certain amount of revenue you think that could come towards Montgomery County. I actually had a phone call today, and one of my constituents wanted me to support the casino in House Caverns, which is just a real short jump from here. And part of the reason they asked me was because, or, you know, I think he likes to visit the casino, and it's a little closer, but he also brought up a good point. Who is more likely to be able to help us with jobs out of Montgomery County? Would it be somebody 20 minutes away, or, actually, that's not far away, I mean, if you hop on the freeway here, you're probably.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and like, we're looking at the numbers.
I mean, that was the one solid argument I guess he made to me, that made me think a little, was, were they most likely to?
And just, you guys are, you know, you guys are very familiar with the numbers, have looked at them very carefully, you know, you were, you know, if the casino came to answer them, you were getting 5.7 million, the city and the county, so. So, here's, just looking at the numbers, looking at the state projections, if you look at Montgomery County, so if you include OTBs portion, if we add that $100,000 in, you'd get $748,000 from Hard Rock. And from the Schaeferi Casino, you'd get $564,000. So, you'd get, you had almost 200, well, 200,000 more, well, a little less, 180,000 more from the casino in, in City of Rensselaer than Schaeferi. I think the other thing to look at is, City of Rensselaer site is shovel-ready, it's got all the approvals, all the seeker, everything's done. I think our operators believe they can be up in 12 months, so I think the revenue will start flowing sooner than any other casino in the area.
Any numbers on jobs at all? Do you have any?
Yeah, the jobs are about, I think it's 1,000 jobs in, at the Hard Rock Casino.
So, with that many jobs, there's likely gonna have to pull from out of that area anyway.
Absolutely, and I think the difference is, and it's funny, Jim Allen is the Chairman of Hard Rock International, and he came down, he did a presentation, he talked about the casino industry, and there's been, you know, you guys have seen it because you've been involved in it, you know, casino revenues are down, and Atlantic City, and all the arguments. But he made the case that because Hard Rock is more than just slots in a box, right? That's what, they're Hard Rock, and people come just to go to Hard Rock Cafe and, and visit, you know, come because of that name, brand, that they think they can get, you know, that casino can sustain itself better than any other proposal in the area.
Anyone else from the legislature?
I think you make a good point, the essence here is that we would, supporting the resolution would be helping to protect the already-existing revenue stream that is threatened.
Yes. And by supporting us, it doesn't impact you any other way, if somebody gets it, you're still gonna get whatever revenue you have coming, but you'd support us just because of the relationship we have, and the fact that you would get probably $100,000 more through us than you would through anybody else. Now, you also look, I don't know what, I don't know what Schaeferi's revenue projections were, I mean, if they're significantly lower than ours, if ours are 260, and theirs, say, 200, because I think these numbers are based on the same revenue projections, right? Because they're the state numbers. So, if they're 60 million, you say they're 60 million less, then that 180, 80,000 turns into maybe 250, you know, it's, then you start talking real money.
Now, you mentioned 10 to 16 counties have already voted in favor of it, have you not approached the other six, or have you voted against?
Well, if you think, so the others are, right, Schenectady, so they're going for a casino. Rensselaer, very early in the process, and it's ironic, because we went, we went to Rensselaer, because they were gonna approve the site we are currently at, and we had put an option on another site in Rensselaer, so we actually went to the county legislature and said, well, why don't you just say you'll support a casino in your area? So, oh, but it was us, we're gonna be at that site, they're gonna just do a resolution just for that site. But they did one for that site, and then any casino in the county, so that's really their supporting in general. These are like exclusive resolutions just for us. So, you have, so Rensselaer, you know, Rensselaer did both, because these green bushes in Rensselaer. You have Schenectady, you have, what's the other one? Well, Schaeferi, obviously, isn't gonna do it, right? Albany, we were in Albany, and we're kind of, we're still trying to get Albany's support. But I think, you know, if you look at it, yeah, I mean, there are the four, right? So, I don't know what we're missing, but I mean, obviously, it's, and then it's Montgomery and Fulton. So, that's kind of the way it maps out. We would have won, and we, you know, we obviously respected that you guys were going for your casino, that's why we never, you know, I know Peter may have reached out, but once you guys started, you know, pursuing your own, we just, you know, stayed away and, you know, wish you the best, you know.
Okay, Joe?
You said you own part of the land the casino's gonna be on? So, why do you need our support at this point?
Well, we have to win, right? We don't win, we don't get anything, right? So, the more, you know, I think it's, 20% is on, 20 or 10% is on local support, 20%. So, we have, we have the most support, right, right now, we have 10 counties, we have, we have two, we have two towns in Rensselaer County, and we believe that if we can get Montgomery and Fulton County, because you are part of the casino region, that has a lot more weight to it than somebody outside of the region. We do have Washington County now, who's in the region, and really, you're the only two that are outstanding, that would be helpful.
So, basically, after now, you're working against us, right?
Not working against you, I mean, we were pursuing our, you know, our casino. You know, we were very, just so you know, we were, I mean, you guys were very late to the game, we were very early to the game. We were in, we did, you know, six presentations in the city of Albany, probably, you know, six months ago. So, we were very early into the game, long before, I think, you know, Montgomery ever really thought they were gonna get a casino.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you very much. Moving on. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Call of a copy of the minutes. Need a first, with first sponsor. Ryan, second, Alex. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries approval. Oh, by the way, supervisor, or legislator, we were, wanted me to just let you know if there was a, if she had a death in the family, that's why she's not present tonight. We knew the other two legislators were going to be unforeseen and she's traveling. Approval of the budgetary transfers. Looking for a sponsor in a second. Alex, second, Ryan. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Unfinished business? We have no unfinished business. New business, resolutions. Resolution 167, resolution establishing the position of senior probation officer. Sponsors were Wheeler Cuchus. Discussion. Good. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 168, resolution amending the 2014 operating budget sheriff. Sponsors, Cuchus Diamond. Discussion on 168.
Mr. Chairman, just, I support this, this resolution because the sheriff's been doing a good job with these things. But once again, as to form, I don't understand how these numbers are working on this particular transfer.
Pete, are you, maybe we should ask Sean.
Sometimes I think you're teasing me when this happens. Should the amount that we're transferring from equal the amount that we're transferring to?
No, they all add up.
Should they not add up?
They should.
No, they should.
Every time I raise this objection, I'm told that they should. That's why I'm objecting. That's my point.
I got you.
There definitely is a typo.
Yeah, there is.
I have to figure it out. Sean is trying to right now.
What's your total? Duke, what's the total you come up with? What's the total you come up with? Did you add?
No, I mean, Tom, wait a minute.
Just can tell just by looking at the numbers.
Yeah, it's changed, yeah.
There's 2,000 on it, yes, sir.
Could it be the...
Is it 2,000?
No.
2,000, it's changed.
That's pretty good for not adding it up.
Would you like me to hum a theme that you're pretty good with?
That's pretty good that you, you picked up on that and it's only 2,000 dollars off. I mean, without doing the math.
So the transfer doesn't cover it, then?
No, the transfer is 2,000 more.
More? Yeah, okay.
163.
163, 060, 53.
Is that what you're appropriated for fund balance?
163.
So can we treat that as a typo and, or do you want to amend it?
What was the exact number, Sean?
163, what, Sean?
163, 060, 53.
Appropriated fund balance, people are...
I'm comfortable saying it's a typo and just changing the appropriate fund balance to the supervised number.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
I told you, I support the resolution, just want to make the numbers.
Yeah, no, I agree. All those in favor as, as the resolution corrected with the typo?
Aye.
Against, abstain. 169, 169, it's a resolution confirming appointments made by the county executive to the youth advisory board. Sponsors, Diamond, Chessy. Discussion on...
As chairman of the youth board, the name Jason Butler, he withdrew his name as a member. So I believe that there's going to need a amendment to this to remove.
Do we, do we have a replacement?
No, not at this time. We were just notified yesterday that he is no longer interested in serving on the youth board.
So we'll continue with the resolution, but I'll look for amendment to remove the name of Jason Butler.
I'll make an amendment.
I'll second it.
On the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Now, on the resolution as amended, with just the one name of Lucas Prime. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 170 is a resolution authorizing county executive to sign lead poisoning prevention program contract. Sponsors, Diamond, Wheeler. Discussion on 170. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, carries. Resolution 171 is a resolution amending the 2014 operating budget. Sanitary Sewer District, sponsors Kelly Wheeler. Discussion. Those numbers add up. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 172 is a resolution amending 2014 operating budget. Public Works, Wheeler, Diamond were the sponsors. Discussion on 172. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 173 is a resolution amending the 2014 operating budget. Engineering Services, DPW, Whites, Wheeler were the sponsors. Discussion on 173. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 174 is a resolution authorizing county executive to sign agreement. Continuation of CLEO agreement between the county Montgomery and the counties of Fulton and Schaeferi to comply with the implementation requirements of the Workforce Investment Act of 1998. Sponsors were Beniac and Whites. Discussion on 174. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 175, resolution confirming appointments made by the county executive to the workforce development board. Sponsors were Whites and Beniac. No, alright. Discussion on 175. No amendments needed, right? No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, 175 carries. 176 is a resolution refunding the 2014 town and county tax rolls, various parcels. Quackenbush, Whites were the sponsors of 176. It's a discussion on 176. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 177, 177 is a resolution amending the 2014 operating budget. 2014, 2015, enhanced CPS funds, DDS. Quackenbush, Wheeler were the sponsors of 177. Discussion on 177. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 178, resolution authorizing the county executive to apply for funding to New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets to update the agriculture and farmland protection plan for Montgomery County. Economic Development Planning and Tourism, Whites and Beniac were the sponsors of 178. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 179 is a resolution authorizing executive to sign revolving, revolving loan fund agreement. Six Sam Stratton LLC, the flooring authority. Economic Development Planning and Tourism. Sponsors were Diamond and Wheeler. Discussion on 179.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, our next resolution, we're amending the resolution adapting the rules for this various program?
Yes.
So was this, was this written under new rules, old rules?
I believe the rules, if I remember right, I think I asked Ken the question. The rules haven't, have they changed or it's just we're up?
This is updated to the rule him and updated in about five or six years. The changes to the rules is changing the board supervisors and replacing them with the legislature.
Oh, due to the charter changes?
Yes.
Right.
Nothing...
That's the only, there's no structural changes to the rules. It's just updating the...
Okay, thank you.
The board is turning to a viable charter.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none on 179, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 180 is a resolution adopting revolving loan fund, we got to get off that thing. Regulations, Wheeler and Diamond were the sponsors. Discussion on 180. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 181 is a resolution approving the assignment of certain ground leased by Montgomery County Industrial Development Agency in connection with the refinancing by the Montgomery County Capital Resource Corporation of certain bonds issued for the benefit of Hamilton Fulton Montgomery Board of Cooperative Services. Needs a sponsor in a second? I'm sorry, Diamond and Wheeler were the sponsors. Discussion on 181. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 182 is a resolution appointing member to the planning board, District Four, Whites, Beniac. Were the sponsors, is it? Okay, we got it. Already there. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 183, resolution amending the 2014 operating budget. Insurance deductible, Office of the Legislature, Wheeler and Diamond were the sponsors of 183. Discussion on 183. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 184 is a resolution amending 2014 operating budget. Whites, Beniac were the sponsors. Discussion on 184. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, carries. Resolution 185, resolution appointing member to the audit committee. Sponsors, Wheeler, Whites. Discussion. You even sponsored your own...
I sponsored before.
You even sponsored your own demise. Okay.
Quick, let's pass this.
Everybody, all those in favor, 185?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 186, resolution approving abstract of audited claims. Wheeler and Whites were the sponsors. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 187, resolution rescheduling the September board meeting, Office of the Legislature. That meeting, sponsors were Whites and Wheeler. Our meeting, so you know, was rescheduled to take place at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 22nd, is hereby rescheduled for 7:00 PM Tuesday, September 30th.
No, 23rd. Oh, 23rd. Right.
It was original.
It should be the 23rd to the 30th. There you go.
All right, let's see this. Somebody have the calendar or no?
I just checked.
Oh, I'm against, I'm doing against the rules of procedure. You can't use electronics.
23 to the 30th.
All right. 23rd is what it was, now the 30th. That's the important thing, you know it's the 30th. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 188, resolution establishing the position of safety officer. Sponsors, Wheeler, Whites. Barb had indicated she wanted to pull her sponsorship. She can't because she's not here. You will pull yours?
I'll pull my second.
All right, unless there's a second to move forward, that will just...
I'll second it if you want.
All right, we have a second and that would be Joe. We discussed earlier, talking about it. And the county executive was looking at it a little different direction, maybe. Also had been talking with the insurance people, I guess. So he was actually looking to also not have this come forward till we talked a little bit more, which is the reason why I think you pulled yours.
Would you like to have it tabled, sir?
Or pull your sponsorship, either way. I think it's going to come to us in another fashion. So this actually tied it up in the, not tied it up, but the language talks directly about part-time position, city of Amsterdam intermissible agreement, which still is very likely to happen. But if you want to pull it, pull it, or if you want to talk about it a little bit, we could talk about it.
I'll make a motion that we table it this time for further discussion.
Table or you just want to pull?
Send it back to committee.
Okay, we'll just table it. Okay, that's a motion to table. Is there a second to table?
Well, it's two different things to refer back to committee, right?
That's what I was trying to, if we table it, it comes back up at the next meeting. If you pull your sponsorship, it's just off and it starts over.
I'll pull my sponsorship, all right?
Is there anybody else wishing to pick up the sponsorship? If not, we'll move along and 188 is off into the sunset. 189 is a resolution stating support for a gaming facility operated by the New York State Funding LLC located at, I'm not going to say it, D...
Delates.
Delates Landing at premises within the city of Rensselaer and the county of Rensselaer. The sponsor was Wheeler, she, I think indicated she wanted to pull that one too, but she's not here, she can't, but it would need a second.
That one she pulled because it never came before.
Oh, okay.
So...
She didn't tell me that, she told somebody else that.
It doesn't have a sponsor, as we said.
So is there anybody that would like the sponsor and/or second?
I'll move the resolution.
Okay, let's put Duke in as the main sponsor then, so we're not, and is there a second?
I think I'll second it.
Okay, so we have Duke as the sponsor, Terry the second. Now we can have discussion on the resolution. Any discussion? Again, my only concern was one phone call that I had and that was about the jobs itself and how that would. But after hearing a little bit of the presentation and Duke making a valid point...
I think it's too premature after what happened, assuming the casino, I will not go for it.
Well, we're kind of done with public comment, but if nobody cares, I don't.
Oh, I would just say, I opened it up.
Mr. Chairman...
You mentioned before that OTB was against Montgomery County. Let me tell you something. In December of last year, Mr. Schlamm, he come and he talked to OTB and they picked Tobin Pack and they picked Rensselaer. And I said to John, how about Montgomery County? John said, well, go ahead, see what you can do. So what I did when I got back, I contacted Ken Rose and Mike Sainton and he gave us 93 acres of land passed Albenops. So in other words, we, that was our first vote. And we're figuring there, because as you know, on the other side of here, which is a really beautiful land, water is sourced and that's longer to wait. So we figured this would be ideal and it wasn't in the city of Amsterdam. So like you're saying, that was part of OTB back in Montgomery County at the time. Because we only had like two places, John, Rensselaer and Hoben Park.
Yeah, we did look at the site and it was, you know, our choice, we probably would have been fine with it. But, you know, our developers looked at it and they thought, you know, as I think we realize is, the more population you have, the more revenue you're going to generate. And that's kind of, that's the way the decision went. If I could just add that, you know, the presentation to the gaming commission is September 8th, when we give our presentation, so we were hoping to get the resolution before then so we could say at that presentation that we had Montgomery County supporting us.
Well, I just want to reiterate that, that this resolution makes sense because it's helping to protect an already existing stream of revenue in OTB, revenue to the county. In addition, we stand, we stand to benefit the most by the casino who's going to earn the most revenue anyway when it comes to the state distribution formula. So it only makes sense to support this.
Our support is basically just saying, we agree, we would like to support the next best thing. We didn't get it. I mean, there's nothing in it, there's nothing, there's nothing that...
There's no downside to support it.
Well, I mean, there's nothing that's going to drag us funding-wise.
No, not at all, not at all. The only thing you're going to get is more money than you would get from any other proposal. The only thing you're going to get is more money than you get from any other proposal.
Right.
I greatly appreciate you coming out and Mr. Biden, at your service to the county over the years. My only concern is that, I understand that you're looking for all the support you can get and, you know, I hope, you know, it moves forward as you would like. Without hearing from the other competitors, I just have a hesitation as to, I don't feel as though I have all, and not from you, but all the facts presented from, from other casinos and I don't, I guess I don't find it, I don't want to say appropriate, but for, for us as a legislature to support, you know, one over the other without hearing presentations from the others, especially some that might be a little more local and might attract more jobs from Montgomery County.
I am certain, and I hope Matt will correct me if I'm wrong, that the other wasn't invited to come tonight. Whether, whether that means anything, I mean, it wasn't like this was just, we, I think we made that. Matt, did you want to say anything or, I know that, you know, you were so deeply involved with the casino and the whole process, is there a?
Yeah, I think, I think Ryan is right that we did not hear from the other side, but at this point, you know, it was nice to hear from, from this team, but, you know, to be honest, I've been focused more on the budget than this. This is the first I've really learned more about this project here, but I certainly like what I hear, but I too, like Ryan, want to, you know, learn a little more about the, all the sites. I know you have a very time crunch, but, you know, I, I don't know enough personally or how to say anything publicly.
Okay.
I should say concerns, I had conversations with Brian on the side and, but by the other side of the casino, I think referring to Scherey, how much, how long ago were they contacting and inviting? Was it a couple, few days ago?
Well, it was after the, we were notified that this site was coming. I did have a meeting with Scherey in which they discussed a number of ideas in which they were going to follow up with something in writing. I have not gotten that yet. I am certainly not opposed to supporting this site at all, but I did want to at least see what was in writing from the other side before I personally made any public choices.
Let me ask the legislature this, it's, what's the date? August 26th? When's our next finance? When's our next?
The day after, the day after the date that John indicated.
But what I was getting at was if, if we really wanted to reach out to the others and that was the concern for, for some of the legislators, I got, have the time to call the special meeting and they could still have it in time for their September 8th deadline. I like what I heard tonight, but I, I don't want it just to be up for a vote and voted down and that very well could happen. And also, it would give the opportunity for the other legislators to watch video tonight, see the presentation and we could, you know, I mean, I guess I'm committing to saying I would call that special meeting if need be rather than to have it just.
If I could just, so the ten candidates we reached out to, no other casino proposal or, you know, submitted or went and asked for their support. The one, the name Washington County Saratoga, the casino in, in East Green Casino proposal did go and ultimately, I mean, the Washington counties took a stance that if it brings us more money, then we're going to support that casino. And that was the way they looked at it. But I understand the proximity of this area.
Well.
No, and I just wanted to say, I, I agree with Duke, I certainly liked what I heard tonight, but really it's for me, I don't, I had the luxury of not having to call a special meeting to make a decision, so that's why I am a little more comfortable with waiting a couple of days, but if you chose to do that.
Well, my, my thought is, because I do like what I heard and I could support it tonight, but if it's going to get voted down, it's going to be in the newspapers that it was voted down and I don't want that. And if it's just a matter of hearing from the others, then why not just wait and, and I don't want to table it because I can't bring it up at a special meeting, can I?
That's what I would suggest.
We're all going to be here next Wednesday.
You know.
What time is since we moved on?
Who?
Six.
Six?
Six.
We could do it at five.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I could call a special meeting, but it can't be table, if you, if it's tabled, I can't bring it back at that meeting. So, what I'm suggesting is, I don't think I can, can I? Can't bring it back to a special meeting?
You just did that this year already.
On a table resolution, doesn't it come back to the next regular meeting?
Well, it would, but if there was an intervening meeting, it could come back at that meeting.
Okay, all right.
Ordinarily, if there was none, yes, it could come back to the next.
Let me ask, let me ask the council, is the way to do this to table or? Help me accomplish what I want to accomplish.
Do we fold sponsorships?
It might not, trying to accomplish and accommodate the various sentiments that are being expressed and apparently in the light of it because of the absences and so forth, there may not be enough capacity. I would suggest that at this point, the sponsor and/or second pull, pull the sponsorship and if you as chairman choose after review to schedule a special meeting for next Wednesday as was suggested or any other day for that matter, you could schedule it and bring that up. Mr. Chairman, I will pull my second.
Before you do that.
Okay.
I'll call the special meeting. We'll announce that tonight for, I'll call the special meeting for Wednesday. Is that enough time, media time?
Yeah.
So, let's, I will call the special meeting, I'm not going to get on the short change here where I'm not keeping up with my work, but I'll call the special meeting. That, that resolution will be up, except it'll just be, we'll have a resolution of supporting someone. In the meantime, we will contact them and let, tell them what we're doing and give them the opportunity that night to present.
Yeah, it's, it'll be a situation where that's your opportunity and.
And if that, if not, then we'll vote on the resolution and is that a game plan?
Duke is sponsoring the resolution?
Now, now do you want to pull it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to pull, pull my sponsorship, my second.
All right.
You want to announce what you're going to do, don't you know yet?
Well, so Wednesday, September?
I'd say five o'clock.
Third.
What's the, what's the date, six? September 3rd at five o'clock. Make sure my.
Yeah, that's right.
Wednesday, September 3rd at five. All right? That's that. Anything other to come before the board?
Chair, I'd just like to say, I had the, I was in Fonda Thursday 9th when Broadway and Main Street were flooded and I was very impressed. It's come to a point where our local from the village up to the county and state officials, both officials, especially our DPWs, know how to deal with these situations. It was really mind-boggling, the amount of water that was rushing down Broadway here in Fonda, but our officials and our workers were out there, they got it resolved. Our emergency operations center functions very efficiently, was very impressed and I'm very happy to see in the final plan of the New York Rising Countywide Resiliency Plan that this creek here in Fonda that floods out very periodically causing havoc in the county seat is included. I'm hoping we can find some funding sources for that moving forward. The only thing I would say that I'd like to point out and make everybody aware on here this evening that I was disappointed with is there was a CSX freight train blocking the Broadway crossing in Fonda, which is not supposed to happen and if the river were to have come up, it would have blocked all routes out for those residents living between the railroad and the river. CSX, I have been told, is investigating it, but I think that's something that's completely intolerable and we, if we as a legislature and as a county can do anything to prevent that and take a stance, we think we need to because this is a serious issue when, when the river comes up and floods, it floods Park Street before anything else and those residents would not be able, in this case, even to walk across the track because a freight train was blocking the entire tracks through the village. But other than that, I think everything in the county, the county DPW were, were very brave and fast at getting roads back open and it was, it was very impressive to see.
Unfortunately, I mean, not unfortunately that we're getting good at this, but unfortunately it's happened so often, we're getting good at it.
And that's, that's the hidden, you know, hidden part.
Okay. Anything else to come before the legislature? If not, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Terry, second. Ryan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain.